One to the June 23rd, 2020, Allen City Council Meeting. Please let the record reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Nadolski who's asked to be excused. Today, we're going to start with our opening ceremony again reinstating the moment of silence and pledge of allegiance as our agenda normally holds. So what we'll be doing is maybe I'll let Brandon explain what we're going to do.
Yeah, absolutely. So we will take the moment of silence and during the moment of silence, we will have the pledge of allegiance on display for everyone to follow at home. You won't be able to hear anyone say it because that would just be confusing. So you're more than welcome to recite it yourself as we display it on the screen.
Thank you, Brandon. So we'll go ahead and commence that so council members may take their video off so they can save the pledge themselves. Thank you for that. I just have to figure out how to turn my video back on. Okay. I should have it figured out by now. Thanks so much. So this evening, we have a series of public hearings and in these public hearings, this is a time when we're happy to take public input from anyone that would like to make comment about particular items that are exhibited or presented. And so the first item is the enterprise fund transfer and Glenn Simes, the county deputy director, will be presenting for us.
Thank you very much. I am going to go ahead and share my screen. And everybody have that full screen?
Yes.
Perfect. So thank you very much. The item on your agenda is a public hearing, but there's no action on this specific item. So I'll go through the presentation. You accept public input and then there's no further action. These transfers are incorporated into the budget, which you will be taking action on the item after this one. So to kick it off, this is a transfer. What we're talking about here is a transfer from the city's enterprise fund to the general fund. And this is a transfer that's been done for a fairly long time up into the decades timeframe that city's been doing this. However, the new requirement is for notification. And so everybody in the city got this letter explaining what it was, providing the opportunity for input, the Zoom account, the meeting information, to provide input on this transfer. And the way this transfer works is the reason we need to do this notice is per state law, anytime we as a city propose to transfer money out of an enterprise fund to the general fund or out of a general, out of an enterprise fund, excuse me, that's not for the purpose directly related to the operation of the fund, we need to provide this notification. And there are other transfers that come out of the enterprise fund, these four in particular that go to things like administration, go to HR, risk management, some other administrative services. And because those are more directly related to the operation of the fund, we don't need to provide notice for those. However, because these are not related to those, these are related to what we term as in lieu fees in lieu or a transfer in lieu of property tax and franchise tax, we do have to provide this notice and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. So an enterprise fund, just talk about that a little bit, is a fund that is part of the city's budget, but it's accounted for a little bit differently. It's not part of the general fund. These are funds that are intended to support themselves through user fees. So utility rates are a great example of that. The airport is an enterprise fund. Golf courses are enterprise funds as well. If you haven't gotten a chance to see the fantastic video that Brandon put together for us on the budget, I would encourage you to go and take a look at that and provide some explanation for how some of this works. But this particular notice deals with the transfer out of the water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and refuse utility funds. And when we take a look at the utility transfers, as I mentioned, this is for the franchise tax and the property tax. And the reason we do this is because other utilities like Dominion, like Rocky Mountain Power, they do pay franchise tax and property tax to the city. And our intent is to operate these city utilities as though they were a separate entity or a separate utility like those. And so this transfer is intended to act as the collection of that franchise tax and the property tax that we would get from Dominion and Rocky Mountain Power. When we talk about the impact of this transfer, I should start off and say that this is a policy choice. The transfer is not required. The notification is what's required. But this year in the budget that's proposed in front of you tonight, there's a maximum amount that is proposed to be transferred and that's $5.4 million. And that's from, that's collectively from all four of those funds. As I mentioned, this is a maximum amount that would be approved for transfer. The actual amount as the year goes on may be less than that, but this is the maximum. When we talk about that $5.4 million, if that transfer is not made, one common thing that we hear, and as a matter of fact, we did get a comment that was sent to the council having to do with this, if that transfer is not made, utility rates could be lowered because that money wouldn't be transferred out. However, the city would need to do one of two things or a combination of the two things in order to remain fiscally solvent. So this is $5.4 million that would not be in the city's general fund any longer. And so the city could cut services or cut expenses by $5.4 million to account for that money not coming in, or it would have to collect it some other way. If it collects it through property tax, for example, you can see the number on the screen there, the $15.7 million, that's the anticipated property tax revenue for the upcoming FY '21 budget. So you can see what that might do to property taxes if we had to collect an additional $5.4 million on top of that. One of the things that we talk about when we talk about this policy decision, because it is that you can, you can choose to do these other things, you can choose to do it this way, there are pros and cons to both, is that if it is collected, if we try to make up this $5.4 million through property taxes, not all property taxes are collected equally. So it wouldn't necessarily be a one to one. There are properties, property owners who don't pay property tax. So other governmental agencies, schools, religious institutions, those kind of groups don't pay property taxes, but they do pay a water bill. And so this is a way, as we see it, to broaden that base a little bit over for who pays into this. And just to note, if these utilities were independent, we would get that money through the franchise tax and the property tax. This slide is just a quick note to remind the council and everyone that we are no longer transferring out of the enterprise funds for arts money. This is something that was done a couple of different ways over the years, but last year in 2019, for the 2020 budget, this is no longer the case. So there's no longer a transfer out of the enterprise funds to the capital improvement fund for public art. That's funded a different way now. So the public hearing that's required, as I mentioned, there's no action. You set the public hearing a few weeks ago. The notice went out over the course of four weeks to make sure everybody got the notice. There's no action taken at this public hearing. So you simply just accept public input and then the transfers are incorporated into the budget. And as a follow-up to this, the city will send out a follow-up notice indicating what you had approved with the budget. So with that, I'll send it over to Lisa and she can talk for just a minute about the accounting data that we're required to present with this as well.
Thank you, Glenn. This is, this is Lisa Stout, the city comptroller. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Part of the requirement with the transfer out of enterprise funds is to disclose the amount of the budget that this transfer makes up, the expenditure budget. So what is listed here in this chart is the franchise amount, the 6% for per franchise and the 6% for property tax to give the total transfer out. And as Glenn mentioned, the maximum of the transfer would be the 5.4. After year end, we go back in and we look at results of operation and we compare the revenue actually received to the transfer that was made. If it's less than we have proposed here, we will reduce the transfer back that out. So the maximum transfer is 5.4. The expenditure budgets, the total expenditure budgets in the fiscal year '21 adopted budget or the proposed adopted budget are listed here. Water is over 24 million. Sanitary sewer is 12 million. Storm is 5.2 million and refuse is 6.7 million. These make up between almost 10 and a half percent in water to just under 12% in the storm sewer fund. Do you have any questions regarding the accounting data?
Any questions for Lisa?
I have a question, if I might.
Sure.
Have we ever made an attempt to determine the actual amount of value that the cities, the city provides to the utilities for things like legal fleet, you know, things of that nature that, you know, that the utility itself doesn't have to pay because, because the city provides them?
I'm not sure if we've ever done a formal study to determine that amount. And so this transfer does not relate to any services provided by the general fund. This is simply a transfer out to help support city operations. That's just why you're in.
I understand that. I just, I just know that there are some redundancies. If the, if the utility had to provide its, all of its own services that the city currently provides, it would raise that, that utility bill on its own.
Correct, correct. Yeah, yes, I'm not sure if a formal study's ever been done.
Councilmember Hire, I know a few years ago, the finance department did run some rough numbers to see how, how close these transfers were. From what I can recall, the 5%, so these are, these are the two 6% transfers. There's another 5% that comes out for that administrative cost. From what I can recall, those numbers were fairly close to that 5% for the other services, the HR and risk management, some engineering services and overhead and things like that. So I could be wrong about that. It's been a few years, but from what I recall, it was, it was fairly close.
Well, that was my recollection also, but I think it does need, you know, for the citizens that kind of think that we're inflating the, the utility bill to, for some reason, some nefarious reason, I think they need to understand that, you know, we're, we really are doing our best to kind of keep things fairly distributed and make it fair for the, for the citizens too.
Questions, comments?
Chair, I have a quick question. Where does the $5.4 million come from? I understand the math, but where does that come from?
How do we get to that number?
Oh, is that just a, we just say it's 6% of property tax, 6%?
No, it's actually based on the revenue. So we go to the revenue projections through the, through the financial study we do with Louis Young. And we calculate 6% of revenue and we attribute that to franchise tax and 6% of revenue and we attribute that to property tax.
And maybe let me just follow up real quick. I think where councilmember Hire was kind of going with this and maybe his question was leading down this road is that it is an incentive for us to actually raise utility rates so that we can get more into our general fund budget. And so is there a maximum that we will, like a maximum cutoff? So if we know that it's always going to be five point, or $5.4 million, is there a maximum cutoff that we look at? Because at this point, it, why not raise utility rates extremely high so that we can get more money into the general fund based on the calculation? And so I'm just with councilmember Hires' question.
So if council, if council wants to change the way that we calculate that from 6% for franchise and 6% for property tax, that's something we can certainly consider, but that's not the formula that we, we followed.
I guess, I, I guess, and that's what, that's why, you know, asking, following up with councilmember Hires' question is that, you know, what, what is it truly costing us to, to do that? To, to actually do that service, to actually, to actually have that service. And I don't, I don't mind the, the way we're calculating it, that it's not very, I don't know, it's not very transparent in a way because we could just totally raise utility rates so that we can help fund more money into the general fund.
I think, I think I get what you're saying, councilmember White, is like, you're not advocating for raising it, but you're just saying if there's potential there that constituents might think we would raise, raise to get more money in the fund. Whereas I think what I'm hearing is how do we like really associate the cost of what's actually happening to what that number is?
Correct. And I.
Okay.
You did, you hit it on the, you hit it on the head. I just want to make sure that, so I don't mind the way we're calculating it. I don't mind, I mean, I understand why we do it. I just, what is, what is the assurance to the public that we're not just arbitrarily raising our utility rates so that we can get 12% if you will, into the, the general fund? You know, down the road. I mean, am I making any somewhat sense? But I think.
I understand, I understand the question. The, the 12% is not based on anything but the revenue received in the enterprise funds. So there's no correlation to services provided in the general fund to this 12%. This is, this is a proposal that is made to help support activity in the general fund.
Yeah. Is there any way, and I think going to that, and you said a few years back, Glenn, that we looked at the, that it, I mean, is there a way that we could say every five years, we're going to reevaluate the services provided by the utility department and it's X amount of dollars or anything like that? Is there a way to, to write that into more of a policy?
I think that's something that we could look at, just to look and see maybe actuals at the end of the year and see if we could come up with a number. We'd obviously have to work with finance to see what numbers are available and how close we could get to, to that. I think you're talking about the 5% administrative transfer. I think we could look at that. I'm going to do my best to take a stab at I think what the other side of that question is. When you adopted the utility rate study in 2012, there were a number of financial principles that you put in place. For, for example, a number of days of cash on hand and, and, you know, wanting to do a certain amount of capital improvements every year. Those are the things that, that are going to dictate how much, what our utility rates are going to be or what our, the revenues are going to be to make sure we cover the expenditures based on, on the, the financial principles that were put in place. So I don't know that those financial principles, I don't know that, that raising rates sort of arbitrarily would match the financial principles that you put in place. So I think that would keep us from raising rates for the purpose of inflating that actual dollar amount of the 6% if that's what your question is. So I think those are the guards that we've got. So we've got financial principles in place and how we operate the utility funds and that's going to dictate what our, what our rates would be and what our revenues would be to make sure we cover those expenditures. And then this calculation is based off of that. So this is several steps down the line. So I don't know that, that this transfer would be our incentive to get more money to the general fund, if that makes sense.
And maybe I could just add one other thing as well, one other check, I suppose, is that every time you want to go to a bond for those projects or bonding agencies are looking at those things to see if your rates are sustainable. And, you know, so they're looking at a lot of what the, the community can afford because they don't want rates so high that, that everybody just stops paying or whatever. So there are other checks and balances in place, not to mention elections every four years that, that might keep you, you or a future council from doing that.
Chair, just one other thought about some of the money that isn't calculated in. Every time the utilities have to dig in the road, it shortens the life of the roads, which costs the general fund money to pay to replace the roads and to repair the roads. And I don't know how we would calculate that in, but there's a fair amount of money involved with the shortening of life of our roads when it comes to the utilities.
Yeah, I appreciate, I just, I think when people ask me questions, they wonder if that's, they wonder if that's the way to get more money into the general fund. And they just, and so I, I don't mind the calculation. I don't think that it is incorrect. I just want to make sure that, like you said, Glenn, that there's guardrails in place so that we don't arbitrarily increase our, our fees on the water and utility rates to, to help support the general fund. And so I just, I appreciate the conversation. So thank you.
Back up what Glenn said is I remember that report and actually the services that is calculated to, from the utilities to the general fund for services is pretty close. It's really, the type of services that we provide, the cost is, is right on the, what goes into the general fund. So that report that Glenn gave was, was pretty accurate in this amount that is actually given to the general fund.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you, Glenn and Lisa. So now we'll open up for public input. Brandon, would you mind explaining to the folks how they might participate?
Not at all. Thank you. So for those of you who are joining us via Zoom, you will be able to provide your input if you wish to do so. You would need to raise your hand. If you're joining us through the app, there is a hand raising feature at the bottom of your screen. Just simply click or touch that to raise your hand. If you are joining us via telephone, you can do the same thing by pressing star nine on your keypad and you will be allowed three minutes.
Thank you.
Chair, well, we're waiting for someone to raise their hand. Can I make a comment about that guardrail situation?
Sure.
I think the, the idea that we initially had in 2012, the water utility or the utility rate study was that we would have that, that conversation every five years. I believe we even put it into ordinance that we would do that. And that is the guardrail that I think we, we have in place. That's what sets that, those percentages. And, you know, the discussion we had eight years ago on our last utility rate study, I think we did settle on that that was a very fair, those were percentages that were very fair and we had quite a bit of public input on that also. So just leave that out there for your consumption.
Thank you. So Brandon, I'm not seeing any hand sprays. Do you concur?
I do.
Chair, I'll make a motion. We close the public hearing.
Thank you. Motion to close the public hearing by councilmember Hire.
I second that.
Oh boy, that was a tie. Second by councilmember White. This time, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next up, we have a presentation from Janine Miller Smith, our council executive director about the salary schedules.
Yep, I'll let me share my screen here. Everybody can see that?
That's good.
Okay. So tonight, you'll be considering adopting the salary schedules. There are four schedules. Non-merit special, and that's all elected officials, most of the management positions, council, mayoral staff, judges, attorneys. And there's the merit, so that's all other non-sworn employees. And then police and fire each have their own schedule. Other information that's included in the salary schedule ordinance talks about reclassifications and then the new positions that are added that are in there. There are six in total. All of those are grant funded, which is sort of unique for this year. It also determines or establishes whether there's any COLO or merit increases. As we've discussed many times, there's none included. So these salary schedules are the same, are the same as were adopted last year and employees will not be receiving COLO or merit increases. The health insurance is going to increase and the city will continue to pay 100% of that, the health savings plans, other plans, the city employees that are on those other plans will pick up. And then the city will pick up any increases in the tier two retirement. So that is it. Very basic salary schedules. This also becomes part of the final FY 2021 budget document as, as an exhibit. And so it will be.
Any questions? I'm sorry, Janine. My, my internet's a little shaky now. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I'm good.
Any questions for Janine? Okay. So the public hearing for this item only on the salary schedules. If anyone would like to comment. I think Brandon explained before how you might do that. I don't think we have any new participants, I can see. So, well, there might be one new one. Brandon, do you, do you want to explain again how they might participate?
Absolutely. So again, the only way that you are able to comment right now is if you are participating in the meeting via Zoom and you would do that by using the raise hand feature, which is found at the bottom of your screen, whether you're on the desktop or mobile. And if you are calling in, you would press star nine to raise your hand.
Thank you.
Chair, seeing nobody rushing to raise their hand, I would make a motion to reclose the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Hire, a second by councilmember White to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
And then if there's no other discussion, then I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
Chair, I propose that we adopt ordinance 2020 dash 20, adopting the salary schedules.
I second that.
So the motion by councilmember White, a second by councilmember Stevens to adopt the salary schedules proposed ordinance 2020 dash 20. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hire?
Council member higher.
Aye.
Council member Lopez.
Aye.
Council member Stevens.
Aye.
Council member White.
Aye.
Vice chair Blair.
Aye.
Chair Chaburka. Aye. And that passes. Thank you. Next up, we have um, council executive director Janine Miller Smith, once again, uh, presenting the fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty one final budget.
Well, let me see. Can't find it.
You lost the budget.
I know. Terrible. Nice though.
Back to square one, huh?
That would be bad. Let me see. Uh, final budget. Okay, I know what's there.
Janine, if you're having trouble finding it, do you want me to just share it from my screen?
No, I got it now. Thanks.
Perfect. No problem.
Okay, slight change. Okay. Sorry about that.
No problem.
So it has been, I, I mentioned to the staff uh, yesterday during staff meeting that it's been a budget process night like no other. This is uh, the schedule that we've um, followed. Received the mayor's proposed budget clarack in May. When we were, and uh, since then, we've been meeting regularly with uh, the directors. And reviewing uh, the revenues and expenditures for each of the departments. We've adopted the RDA and MBA budgets um, on June ninth. Uh, last week we had a Facebook live as well and been uh, taking out certain questions through other means. And so tonight, we're considering adoption of the final budget. As you know, the, this has been a tough year with the COVID nineteen. It's been hard to know for um, the administration and the, the finance people know exactly what kind of impacts we're going to experience. Uh, because uh, revenues come in at a lag. And so it's hard to know how they're going to come in. So the priority has been uh, financial sustainability and maintaining essential services. Uh, the budget is very um, conservative in the estimates. As we've discussed um, these many, many weeks. We have the strategic initiatives in the five-year plan. Uh, each of these um, initiatives have been touched on in the budget. Many and ongoing projects as we've discussed and um, still working, we, we feel like um, at least we're meeting the, the uh, the ideas set through in that strategic uh, plan. The initial budget uh, prepare, uh, proposed by the mayor uh, included a hundred and eighty-two million uh, in these various funds. General, uh, if you'll notice, the general fund is down four million dollars, but, but we actually are projecting a slight increase in the property taxes because of the expiration of a couple of RDAs, which includes the BDO, BDO. And so that's been uh, one saving grace for this year is that we will get that uh, additional property tax uh, coming into the coffers. But as you can see, most of the other uh, funds are down. Uh, there are some slight increases um, in uh, some of the utilities because of the CPI uh, increases that are built in. There are some changes in the proposed uh, A1 schedule. Um, in the general fund, there's no change, although they are moving some money or thirty-seven thousand dollars around in the amphitheater activities from professional tech to temporary wage, but it's a zero uh, net effect to the general fund. Uh, in the CIP, um, there's five hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred dollars uh, in changes. That's five hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. It's coming in as a grant with an additional forty thousand from BDO-ish revenue that's required as a grant match. Uh, and then there's also transfers uh, of ninety-seven five uh, just to make some corrections to the right account. And that's a net zero change. Airport fund is getting some COVID uh, grant funds in a million plus. And those are just going to be going, going into fund balance uh, for future expenditures. Again, recognizing the transfer of forty thousand three hundred uh, to the CIP for that CMAT grant match. Fleet and facilities is recognizing the lease proceeds that we just discussed earlier in the work session. Um, which will uh, be used to purchase that heavy equipment. And then uh, the miscellaneous grant funds, which is two point six million dollars. Um, you'll be also discussing that in the, these are funds that will be used to uh, fund the grant program that will be discussed um, later in the evening. So with those additional proposed changes, uh, there's four point three million, uh, five point three million dollars. Um, in additional revenues and expenditures, which brings the total to almost a hundred eighty-seven million dollars for the overall city budget. As we've discussed, uh, there's no property tax increases proposed. But as part of the budget, you do adopt the certified tax rate and that's included in the ordinance. The certified tax rate for twenty twenty is point zero zero two six five one. I included um, numbers from twenty fifteen uh, through twenty twenty, twenty sixteen is the year that you did the first increase, tax increase in more than, I think thirty years. Uh, and over the next two years, you maintain that rate. Last year, there was no tax increase. This year, there's no tax increase. And I've, I've showed the, the uh, how that tax rate has continually lowered over since um, you know, the last thirty years. As I mentioned, uh, the salary schedules are included as part of uh, the budget ordinance. And also the council budget message and goals and guidelines are included. And you've had an opportunity to review those. One thing that's uh, Ben, that we've learned of anything as, as council staff is to make sure that you have the opportunity to closely review the revenues as they're coming in over the next few months and even into next year. Um, so that you can understand and track the, the impact of COVID nineteen on uh, primarily sales tax, but other, other areas of cities revenues. So with that, I'll address any questions.
Any questions for Janine? I guess my, my only question is, Janine, is um, we had talked a little bit before about how we might track or what some measures were. Are those measures still in development with the administration around how we might monitor the income for the city?
Yeah, so um, Mark Johnson, the CAO has, has offered to provide um, the revenues from it's the sales tax revenues report that they get every month. And also maybe compare that to the previous year. So that will be, that will be at least one measurement. We're still working through some others, but that's going to be the best. Um, I think it's really sales tax that they anticipate will be impacted. Possibly some property tax, but mostly sales tax.
Thank you. I know that is definitely a concern of myself and some other council members is just the concern of not providing any pay increases across the board, but especially the step increases for the public safety officers. So we want to monitor that closely so that if there's the opportunity, we could revisit that topic. Any other questions?
Chair, if, if I could, I just want to, I have a comment or two. And I, I just want to say that I appreciate everything that both administration and our council staff has done to look at this budget. It, you know, I think um, Janine said it the best. This is a budget like no other. Um, and I, 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 I think that continuing, continuing to try to put it into our strategic initiatives has been awesome. I mean, I think trying to figure out that we are still on track to be able to, to, to service um, our, our citizens is, is is a, is a pretty high standard. And I, I, knowing that other cities are laying off people, knowing that other cities are increasing property taxes, all sorts of things. Um, as late as last week, we know that the state has been trying to, you know, uh, balance their budget. And my guess is that we're going to see changes come from that, from a, a sales tax perspective and, and all sorts of different things. So I just, I want to commend, I know that this has been a Herculean uh, task. And I just want to commend both our staff and administration to be flexible, to make sure that we are continuing to be the, the fiscally responsible, responsible community that we, we are. And um, I look forward to the, the regular updates. And I just want to shout out to say thank you because this has been a really hard thing in this, this time. So I appreciate everything you guys have done. So thank you. Kudos. Both our staff and uh, administration working together. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we will open up this public hearing and I don't think there is anybody new this time for real. Brandon, unless you've been seeing that. So we can just open up um, this topic, the final budget for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one um, for public input.
Okay, Angel Castillo, you are, the, the time is yours.
Thank you so much. Um, thank you, council members. Uh, we're talking about the budget and budgets are moral contracts with the community. They tell the community where your priorities as a council lie. And a budget that you pass says to the community, this is the best that we can do. And we believe this is the optimal way to spend your tax dollars to achieve what you entrust us with, and that is public safety and infrastructure. And sadly, I do not believe this twenty twenty, twenty-one budget does that. And I call on you to do better. I call on you to not rubber stamp yet another budget and give our officers the four percent step increase they were promised. And you do hold the power to temporarily amend, raising only a portion of the public safety salaries. It's a pandemic and you can make temporary, short-term decisions for the safety of the community. We are at a pivotal point in our country's history. We have a pandemic. We're dealing with a social uprising regarding systemic racism. Where black and brown people are being disproportionately subjected to violence and death by law enforcement. Every single police department in this nation can and must do better. Every department needs to look at their procedures, their training and make adjustments. And Ogden is no different, but what scares me the most for our public safety is the exodus of experienced officers from the department. We are just one rookie mistake away from a tragedy and a multimillion dollar lawsuit. Less than fifty percent of our sworn officers have five years or more of experience and we just swore in five new officers and that's awesome, but four of those officers have zero experience and one has one year and a half. Our officers should be trained by individuals with ten years or more of experience and we cannot do that. We have babies training babies and because we don't pay enough. Our officers leave to work in other agencies. We just lost an officer two weeks ago to UTA. And losing officers with five or more years of experience is nothing new for Ogden. If you don't find five hundred and twenty thousand dollars to pay our officers, the four percent step increase they were promised, you're pouring kerosene onto the exodus fire and you will put us into an even deeper salary hole for next year when our economy comes back to normal. So are you going to continue to prioritize property over public safety? Do you not care that we can't keep or attract lateral hires for more than five years of experience? Do you not care that our police department doesn't have enough money to offer annual implicit bias training for every officer? Do you not care that the department doesn't have enough money to offer annual de-escalation training for each officer? Do you not care that the department doesn't have enough money for proper arrest control training for every officer every year after they graduate? Because academy is the last time an OPD officer gets that. Where I'm going with this is that we don't just have an annual pay problem for OPD. We don't budget enough money for the type of training. We need to keep our officers and community safe. I strongly ask you to reject this budget. I ask you to do better. Stop prioritizing property over people and, and paying marketing fees and professional subscriptions. Scale back more. You can do better. Thank you.
Thanks, Angel. Any other public comment?
No more action on that. I will make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Have the motion by council member higher, a second by vice chair Blair to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And so now I'd be happy to entertain any motions.
Chair, I'll make the motion that we adopt uh, ordinance twenty twenty dash nineteen. Um, adopting the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Have a motion by council member higher, a second by vice chair Blair to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one final budget. Um, is there any other discussion on this item? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Council member Lopez.
Aye.
Council member Stevens. Council member Stevens.
Aye.
Council member White.
Aye.
Council member higher.
Aye.
Vice chair Blair.
Aye.
Chair Chaburka. Aye. And that passes. Thank you. Um, next up, we have um, Ward Ogden of Community Development. He's going to speak to us about the neighborhood revitalization strategy area.
Thank you very much. This is Ward Ogden. I manage the community development division. And if I have permission, I will share my screen.
You have permission.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is it viewable?
Not yet.
Okay, let me try this one. See if that works. Oh, I have to, one more command. Got to get it. Okay. There we go. Okay. Today we have um,
Yes. Good job. Thank you.
Okay, appreciate your um, your patience and continuing to work with us as we um, uh, work to establish and receive our federal grant money for community and economic development. Um, the, I'll quickly give a, a, an overview of what the neighborhood revitalization strategy area is and then talk about um, a revised plan. Uh, the neighborhood revitalization strategy area is a targeted implementation plan for the use of our federal funds that we get from Department of Housing and Urban Development. It's a, it kind of targets it into uh, into a specific neighborhood so that we can achieve greater results. Um, it's encouraged by HUD to develop uh, community, um, create communities of opportunity in distressed neighborhoods. It's the goal, uh, is to stimulate reinvestment in the community and empower low-income residents as part of an overall comprehensive community revitalization strategy. And it creates additional incentives for us um, over and above what we normally get with our federal grants that can help us with um, some creative ways of doing positive movements and um, doing some uh, job creation and retention activities. Uh, the area that was adopted is um, these census tracts that show highlighted, they are basically the east central neighborhood, the downtown area and the areas uh, surrounding the downtown to the west and south. and the areas surrounding the downtown to the west and south. On May 12th, the council adopted the consolidated plan, which is the five-year plan for the use of our federal funds and the action plan for the year 2021, the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. And they adopted an NRSAs, Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy area. As we work with HUD to, of course, we have to submit these documents. And so we're, we're submitting them to HUD and talking to them about what they would like to see in their final approval. It came to light that they thought that since our, our Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy area has been in place for some time, that it would be a good idea to talk about some of the accomplishments that we've had in the, in the area and how we've developed the strategy and how we plan to move forward with this strategy. In the, in the past years, we adopted a strategy in, in 2010. And in 2015, we asked HUD to, to basically accept a re, a renewal of that plan. And it didn't really take a lot of documentation. We just said, hey, let's, let's do this again as a program. Let's, let's continue operating this. And so the approach that we took on May 12th, basically say the same thing, which they had done before. And that was to basically say, let's renew this. We're doing great work. Let's just keep the effort going. And they said to us, it would be a good idea to give to the public some background in terms of what the plan, how the plan was developed and what some of the successes have been in that, in that plan. In addition to that, as, as things keep moving forward, obviously, there's a, there's a lot of movement on the federal budget activity. And there is a grant fund that we received recently called the CDBGCV, which is the Community Development Block Grant that's targeted to the coronavirus, targeted needs for relative to the coronavirus pandemic. And so the, the action, or the NRSAs that was adopted on May 12th did not include the goals for the use of that money. So we were asked to include those goals in the NRSAs. And it basically carries forward the goals that were adopted in the consolidated plan. But we also put them into the NRSAs. So it's, it's, really, everything is the same in the plan in terms of its goals and operation, except for that, those new goals from the CDBGCV money. Well, that's not confusing, but it, basically what we're, what we're proposing is that the council adopt a new, a revision to the plan that was adopted on May 12th with, which includes a few things and we'll just kind of quickly cover them. The updates are a background history of the Ogden's NRSAs over time and additional supportive demographic consensus data, some discussion on our strategy development. And then again, the CDBGCV money. Little bit of an expanded citizen participation discussion. And then some before and after pictures that highlight some of the successes. And in addition to that, a discussion relative to educational improvements due to the, to the Newbridge School, which was built in the NRSAs. Basically, these are the, the goals and the, the targeted efforts that the NRSAs includes. These are not changed except for the very last one, which is the, the CDBGCV money. And these, these items are in, in the plan and are carried forward into the new plan. So basically, that's the, the changes. And we just thought maybe for the public's information and, and view, we could just highlight quickly some of the successes that the plan includes. Over time, there's been a number of housing improvements in the area. And these are some, some really nice before and after shots. And I'll just kind of go through them very quickly to show how the area has been improved in terms of its housing quality and, and opportunities for people to purchase homes, moderate and low-income home buyers for the most part, and some, and some really dramatic turnarounds, some really great projects been done. And then, of course, the before and after, the, the former B school replaced by the Newbridge School. The Ogden bungalows before and after, dramatic turnaround there as well. It also highlights a number of the economic development activities, business development activities, and the historic, and these kind of go historically from the 90s up through now. The 25th Street projects, the municipal park, the Intermodal Hub, Hampton Inn, the Twin Rivers Scowcroft IRS complex, Union Square, American Can complex and the Times Square development, the, the Treehouse Center, the, the Recreation Center in the Solomon Center, Megaplex, the Bingham Cyclopes, number of things, great, great accomplishments that just keep moving as time goes forward. The Junction Projects, the IRS Phase Three, Walmart, number of things on 25th Street, Hilton Garden Inn and some, some other downtown businesses that have been assisted. Junction again and, and a number of other things that we can just kind of quickly buzz through. So that's kind of a, a quick thumbnail on the, on the accomplishments. And so the recommendation is that the council adopt the resolution that adopts this new revised NRSAs that we can then send to HUD and would meet their requirements. And we can then proceed with obtaining our federal funds and moving forward in our new fiscal year. Any questions?
I have a quick question. I'm, you know, I just noticed in that little slideshow, I mean, a lot of great success, but I just noticed some businesses there that, I don't know if they don't exist at all anymore, but they don't exist in those locations. So does that still qualify as kind of a, a success, even if the business doesn't exist in those spaces anymore?
Yeah, those are, I mean, you know, I guess the, the idea would be that creating, creating jobs and setting up businesses, things, you know, those businesses can flourish for, for a time or they can be set up for a period of time. And in terms of success, I think that's a, maybe that's a subjective discussion in terms of can it be successful if the business operated for a period of time? If jobs were created for a period of time? The, the length of the, we're not, we're not getting into the discussion as to how long it takes a business to, you know, if a business stays for a given period of time, it's, it's rated to be a success. It's, that's, that's, I guess, in the eye of the beholder.
Just curious. And any questions from other council members?
Great job, Ward.
Thank you.
I'd agree. Chair, if I could, I, I think that one of the things that's really important to recognize is that there are targeted areas that we're not spreading money. You know, we're very, we're very targeted in, in what we're doing and with our limited funds. And so I really appreciate Ward doing what he's doing because it, it's making a difference. And I thank you, Ward, for doing that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, thanks, Ward. And yeah, I still am very interested to know how many residents, you know, in, from that area were actually positively impacted by this work too. But that's for another discussion. I'm looking forward to seeing if we can pull some of that data.
Certainly.
Okay, so this item is also, it's a public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Exactly. Thank you. It's under that board. And so we can open this particular item up for comments if anybody would like to comment. You have three minutes to speak if you raise your hand on a Zoom call.
Chair, I'm not seeing any hands, and so I'll make the motion that we close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
The motion by council member Hare or second by council member White to close the public hearing, on favor?
Aye.
I'd be happy to entertain any motions about this item.
Make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2020-16.
I second it.
We have a motion by council member Hare, a second by council member Stevens to adopt proposed Resolution 2020-16. And this is a roll call vote, but first I should ask, is there any more discussion about this item? Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Stevens.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Hare.
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Vice chair Blair.
Aye.
Chair Chaburka.
Aye, and this item passes. Thank you, Ward. Okay, so now we are really lucky. We have quite a few reports from the Planning Commission with Greg Montgomery. And the first item is the proposed general plan amendments for the airport. And so welcome, Greg.
Okay, hopefully, do you see anything yet?
Not yet.
Hang on, Greg, let me get that pulled up for you. All right, that is up, Greg, and just let me know when to advance to the next slide.
Okay. Well, I don't know if you call this really lucky or not, but we, we do have some items from the Planning Commission for your consideration tonight. The first being the amendment to the general plan based on the master plan that you had approved a few weeks ago for the airport. So this, this requires the amendment to the transportation section of the general plan. Next. So the general plan is developed in 2000, 2001 with the format of creating objectives and strategies that guide future actions. And we have always known that amendments will take place as changes occur. And this is no exception with the airport general plan portion. Next. So there are two parts to this plan amendment. One is the, what I'd call the introductory that's found in the general plan. Next. This deals with basic information about the Ogden-Hinkley Airport. And as time has gone on, improvements have been made to the airport, revisions have been made. One runway has been eliminated, so we talk about that. We've had commercial service come into the airport. We've created a parking lot for those services. These additions, expansions, hangars, all those types of things are reflected in this section, updating it from what was then 2001 to now 2020. Next. The other part of the general plan update for the airport deals with those objectives and strategies and getting those clearly identified based on the newly adopted master plan to be able to talk about how the airport is an important economic generator for the region. Sometimes it's not quite as evident, but when you look at maybe the financial situation of the city in itself, but in the region, that airport has, serves a very important purpose. And so this identifies by these strategies to continue on using the airport as an economic incentive for the northern Utah area. Also, strategies are revised based on the airport master plan, looking at the transportation connections, not only just from the air, but once you're at the airport, how do you move about with goods and services? Next. So as I mentioned, there are five new strategies being added and two that are being amended. Some of them deal with implementing a street system that will be used and needed as, as development occurs. Other things look at the need for different types of hangars to meet aircraft needs. Also looking at as the airport expands, the infrastructure improvements and identifying those. One of the things that this slide shows is also identifying that came out of the airport master plan.
Don't you dare.
Study on historic resources. And while the airport in general would not be considered a historic district, the airport terminal building is eligible to be a historic resource. It's art, modern architecture of the, the late 40s, the design of the tower, all signify things that were transpiring at that time in, in our country in architecture. And the airport terminal captured those things. And so one of the recommendations of the new strategy is to consider looking at placing the terminal building on the national and the local register. That's a new, a new strategy being added. Next. So as the Planning Commission considered this, they looked at two things. Is this language we're having consistent in meeting our objectives that are in the transportation section of the general plan, looking at the airport? And also, do they, the strategies guide and direct the future direction of the airport with this and the master plan being used hand in hand to move forward in those directions? Next. So the Planning Commission, their recommendation to you voted nine to zero to recommend approval of the proposals for the amendments to the general plan as, as are before you tonight. Any questions?
I have a question, Chair.
Please, go ahead.
We, I brought this up at our work session about the, the terminal building. You know, it's historic features or whatever it is. It, you know, as I've thought through that whole process, I, it doesn't seem to make sense that we would need to do that to protect it against ourselves. It, just having it listed that way also, I don't think most people consider an airport someplace to go look at historic stuff. So I'm wondering why we would even include this as part of, a part of an airport master plan. This doesn't seem to fit. That's a square peg round hole.
Well, I could maybe address that. I, I think there are things at airports nationally that are on national historic registers. For example, JFK, the TWA terminal building. At LAX, that control tower with its arches that support the, the control tower. Those are all on the national register. Dulles also has on the national register for their thing. So terminal buildings really are an eligible item for historic register protection or recognition. And while the national register recognizes those buildings nationally and people can identify them, some people do look at those things, look at the architecture. And they're done to preserve the TWA, like I said, TWA terminal, TWA doesn't even exist anymore, but the terminal does. And the renovation work they did on LAX the last four years with that control tower building. And those are things that are important if we, if we want to recognize that we do have history and our aviation history with Hinkley and other things. There's a story to be told and having them on the register helps tell that story. We don't get any tax incentives off it. What we do is, is we are what we call the certified local government. And with the state, if we have things that are listed on the register, sometimes money can be used state funding and certified local government to do historic preservation work on those buildings. But without it being on a register, those aren't available.
Another question then. If the airport does grow and expand as we hope it will, it would almost seem that this might be an impediment to that. There could be an impediment to that, and I still kind of go back to the same point, who are we protecting it against?
Well, I would maybe go back in time and say we had a lot of city parks, but we felt we needed to rezone them even though to all one, even though they were all under city control. But we felt we needed to do something to protect the parks by zoning them even though we owned them all.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying, Councilmember Hayer. I live in a historic, you know, home, and there certainly are
Chair, can I?
Oh yeah, sorry. I didn't know if you could hear me. I was talking about my own experience with that too. I mean, I knew it when I bought that home, there would be a lot of restrictions, but it certainly does put some barriers in your way. Go ahead, Councilmember Stevens.
Yes, I wondered, on this general plan, the objectives and strategies and goals are, do they have to be in line with the federal government? For an example, we'll present our plan and some of the things we'd like to do, but they review those, and if some of them don't comply with what they're thinking, that may affect the plan. Is that right, Greg?
There is a balance between the two, and what we try to do is make sure that our objectives and strategies would be consistent with the airport master plan, which is a FAA document. And so, we're trying to make sure they don't conflict.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just to respond to you, Angela, you know, Chair, I think that you know, I think historic areas, historic homes, historic you know, things like that do have a place. I just, it just doesn't seem like it fits in an airport.
I hear you. Great, well, this this item is up to receive public input, so if anyone would like to comment about this particular item, they may do so now.
Angel Castillo, you have been unmuted, and your time will begin shortly.
Thank you. Angel Castillo, I wholly support putting that portion of the airport on the historical register for a number of reasons. Our historic buildings with character are part of who we are. And I've been to the airport several times, and that particular building and tower is significant. Is it the greatest thing ever? No, but it's a piece of our history. And as Greg Montgomery pointed out, there are plenty of other airports across the nation that preserve pieces of their history so that you can touch who we were and look forward to who we are. With regards to Councilmember Hayer's comments of who are we protecting it from, well, we are protecting it from ourselves, particularly because in 50 years, none of you people are going to be on the council. The mayor isn't going to be the mayor, the council isn't going to be the council, and it's important to preserve our history, and that is what putting something on the historical register does. It makes sure that we leave some sort of legacy for people to admire as we grow and change as a city. And also, as Greg pointed out, there is historical registration money to rehab historical monuments and buildings, and we can't receive any of those funds if we don't put it on the record. So, I fully support it being preserved, and I think it's important that we retain some of our history. There are other states that kept none of their history, and they are very bland and boring. And that's one of the things that I love about Ogden is that we have such a pride and historic history in our buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'm not seeing any other hands raised. Would anybody like to close the public input?
You don't have to close public input.
Yeah, Chair Chaburka, you do not have to close public input, just only public hearings.
Thank you. Okay, so we don't have to close that. Would anybody like to make a motion about it?
I'd kind of like to make a comment to our public, to Angel. I, you know, if a council can protect it, the council can unprotect it too. So, even though we might do it, it doesn't ensure that another council wouldn't undo that. That's just the nature of those things. And we can't bind future councils. But, you know, with that, I will, well, I'm gonna let somebody else make the motion on this one.
Right. Anybody like to make a motion on this? I certainly can't do it myself.
Chair, I propose that we adopt proposed ordinance 2020-25, admitting the Ogden City general plan.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember, sorry, me doing it, Councilmember Hayer, sorry. A motion by Councilmember White, a second by Vice Chair Blair, and if there are no other discussion items, this is a
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayer?
No.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Chaburka?
Aye, and that passes. Would you like to make any comments about your vote, Councilmember Hayer?
I think it's fairly clear. I just think that's ill-advised to, you know, while it is an interesting building, the concern is, at least that I have, is that that building is part of the problem with the whole, the terminal building, the terminal part of that building is part of the problem with the whole building. The windows shattering, coming down and causing the problems that we now have with the roof. There's, it's a place for pigeons, it's another thing to upkeep. It isn't in its original state even as it sits. I don't, I think it's just folly to try to to protect something that that might be more valuable as something else, to use the land for something else at a future point.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so Greg Montgomery will be up again, talking about a proposed zone tax amendment for drinking establishment definition.
Okay.
I see your screen, Greg. I don't hear your voice yet.
Okay. You see it?
Yes, and I hear you as well.
Well, that's a good sign.
On the right track.
Yeah. So, this is really kind of a two-part item. It came from a petition that's filed by a citizen. But this first item is an item the commission, Planning Commission took from that petition and expanded on it to help clarify some items that have taken place in state law. And that a recommendation had been made a few years ago, but had not been acted on, and so the commission felt important to, again, make those clarifications so that the petitioner's action, which would be the next item, would work together. So, what's being requested is to, in this recommendation from the Planning Commission, is to change some of the wording we have regarding bars, taverns, and then call them drinking establishments. As I mentioned, it's tied to state law changes that have happened in the last few years. Unlike the petition of 2015, this discussion is not talking about is not talking about linear block definitions. It's only talking about the wording we use in defining drinking establishments. As I mentioned, we are looking at, one of the problems that came up with the petition is that they wanted to have the drinking establishment, but in our present language, a bar or tavern only had, could only sell beer. Well, with Ogden Zone, they don't do beer. They do spirits and some language needed to be changed. We also needed to identify where they wanted to have some entertainment, how that applies with what they call the cabaret license, which has entertainment with that. So, present state law states that a restaurant is something that sells 70% or more in food. If less, then it's a bar. We call taverns a bar. Fraternal, echo clubs all follow that, example, the Elks, a country club, those that follow those definitions. And so, we tried, and the commission's recommendation to you, is to take our present language we have regarding taverns and private clubs and separate them out from restaurants. Even though this is a zoning ordinance, the state is a licensing ordinance, so we're trying to to do some things that have worked for Ogden, but still use some of the languages found in the state licensing provisions. And that, as I mentioned, is looking at sales, keeping what we've had for all, for many, many decades of the drinking establishments being where they sell more than 50% of revenue in alcohol. And restaurants where more than 50% is in food sales. And also adding into the language the liquor besides just beer. So, the proposal is to change the wording in the ordinances, to do drinking establishments, revise the definitions, and revise those wording in the land use section. So, anytime we deal with the land use, it talks about drinking establishment now, whether the private club or a tavern. Also, the change in definitions in restaurants is to help clarify it as distinct from the state's licensing provisions. And so, the effects of the ordinance are really, we still keep the status quo of what we've had in terms of alcohol percentage of sales. That doesn't change, even though the state has increased licensing to a higher number for a restaurant for food sales. But we allow provisions for those adult restaurants that are still serving food, that may be serving more alcohol, and they'd be licensed by the state as a as a bar, but for the city, that'd still be a restaurant. We make the distinctions between our restaurant and the state's restaurants. And we keep basically what we've had in place for decades in allowing that type of mixture to take place. We have not addressed, and as I said in this, the two perennial blocks. That was not part of what this petition was asking for, nor was it part of what the Planning Commission wanted to recommend in terms of making clarifications. This shows you the various changes in different sections of the zoning ordinance. It has to deal with every area where that land use is identified in addition to definitions. And the Planning Commission's recommendation to you on this is an 80, 80 recommendation to approve these updated language changes, creating the drinking establishments to replace taverns and private clubs.
Thanks, Greg. Any questions? Well, people are thinking about that, I guess, and I think you kind of answered it, just to be really direct, though. Why don't we just adopt exactly what the state ordinances say?
Well, two purposes. One, again, we still have the two perennial block, and we didn't want that to all of a sudden become a distinction that now a restaurant or dining establishment, which is still more than 50% food, now would be limited by the two perennial block. We still wanted those restaurants to be available, not have a restriction on how many per block.
Okay, that makes sense. Any other questions for Greg?
I have two questions, Chair. One of them is, this 70 for the state of food for restaurants and R50 at any time. I guess this goes along with your comment, Chair, that does the state overrule R50? And if this is passed, does this ordinance affect other parts of the city?
So, this affects all parts of the city that allow drinking establishments, bars, or taverns. So, C3, the M zones, as we'll talk about a little bit later, adding it to the BEH zone. Again, the state is, their numbers are for licensing. There's a certain number of licenses issued for bars and taverns, well, for but we're not issuing licenses, we're issuing, is this permitted in the zone? So, there are two different things taking place. And so, this is not conflicting with the state. Basically, the standard existed when the state had the same standard, they wouldn't licensing. They have changed their standard of licensing. We have still kept our zoning the way it was.
Will this increase our number of establishments then in the city?
It will. It will provide opportunities for those who want to do more dining but still want to not be under the 70% food sales to locate anywhere that they're allowed without having a restriction of the two perennial block.
Okay. And the restrictions in schools and churches are in place.
Those are all still in place in terms of licensing.
Thanks, Greg. Any other questions? Okay, we can open up the opportunity for public input if anybody would like to comment about this particular item. Not seeing any hands raised. So, I think we can go ahead and consider a motion.
Chair, I'll make the motion that we adopt ordinance 2020-24.
Did we receive public input?
We asked.
Oh, and that just went that fast? Sorry.
Yeah.
I mean, they can still interrupt me now if they want to, but I'm not seeing anybody. Thank you, though, for the reminder. I do forget these things.
All right.
I got disconnected. I don't know if everyone is having issues or not, but I'm back. I look like
And I'm back too.
Yep, me too.
All right. I got, I got disconnected. I don't know if everyone is having issues or not, but I'm back online.
And I'm back too.
Yep, me too.
All right.
Hi, sorry, I got frozen and then I couldn't get unfrozen. I apologize. And so I had one motion and I don't know what else happened.
Chair, I don't think anything happened. I think everybody had to go through a disconnection and reconnection too, so I think.
Oh, okay. So let's see. I heard Luis's voice, so Councilmember Lopez is back. I can see two others, so I don't know if Councilmember White is back yet.
I am.
Great, okay. So we had a motion by Councilmember Hare about the drinking establishment definitions.
Second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilmember Hare, a second by Councilmember White, to adopt ordinance 2020-24. Is there any other further discussion about this item? Okay, this is also a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
No.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair? Chair Chaburka?
Aye, and that passes. Councilmember Stevens, would you like to talk about your no vote?
Well, I, I'm a little nervous about the 70-50, but also the possibility of having increased establishments there. But, you know, I, throughout the city, I, I, I still support the 70% by the state in their ruling, so.
Thank you. Okay, and guess who's up next? We've got Greg Montgomery from Planning, who will talk about the other part of this issue, the zoning change for Business Exchange.
Just seeing if that screen shows up.
It does. You may want to go to the full screen.
Are we there?
Um, show one more time from the beginning. Perfect.
There we go, okay. As I mentioned earlier, this is the second part of the discussion, but this is what really created the discussion to begin with. And that was a petition by Blue Ox Development regarding Ogden Zone to amend some provisions that are found in the Business Exchange historic zone out of the old stockyards. As you're aware, Ogden's own distillery is located out there, and some of the uses are not permitted uses in the BH zone. A couple of things that they had in their old establishment, when it was Zone C-3 on Grant Avenue, was they could sell merchandise that talks about their business but is not produced on site, whether it be t-shirts or other type things. That sold merchandise is not allowed in the BH zone unless they actually make it on site. The other thing they want to do is want to have the ability to sell drinks at the site, which were not permitted in the BH zone. And then the third thing was to have the ability to have outdoor events. They have a large area on the east side of the building, an outdoor area that'd be suitable for those type of activities. It'd be right along the, the public walkway areas that lead to the river, and they want to take advantage of those types of things. The idea of having people come there is not unusual. This is a picture of the old Stock Exchange Building and the diner that was there. One of the desires of the owners of the Stock Exchange Building is to create a new establishment there for dining purposes and, and entertainment. The reason why we didn't have that included when the zoning was first looked at, as we created the Stock Exchange Zone, was we're really looking to support the industrial development. But as we went on with, with developing the project, we also realized there's a lot of other resources in that area we want to attract people to. So it's not just a industrial research area, but with the bike park put along the north side of the subdivision, kayak park improvements along Weaver River, the trail connections, we really are catering to include people into this area and to have the services become part of why would we want to be in this area? We have all these other activities, let's make sure those activities can be supported and people can be in that area for a variety of reasons. And so these amenities that exist that we have developed as a city also become the reason to look at maybe some of the changes to the zoning in that BH zone. As I mentioned, some things are, are not permitted, but we have all these things that we've been building around it. And as we attract more and more employees out in that area and have very limited services, there is a need to maybe expand those type of services. As I mentioned, they're looking at trying to have an establishment not only with Ogden Zone, but also in the future with the old Stock Exchange Building. And so one of the corrections or items added is defining cabaret, but limiting hours so that cabaret function is an after-work activity during the weekday, and then Saturday, Sunday could be a daytime activity as well. So proposed language, it looks at allowing the idea of a cabaret. And a cabaret is basically live entertainment that's associated with dining, with drinking, those type of things. Then we looked at the types of outdoor entertainment that could take place. It was determined that because these events would not be every weekend, that using the special event orders to protect the African Australian properties would be better than trying to write so many different requirements in the zoning. Just call it a special event, let it be a special event license, and let that be the means to look at these outdoor concerts or, or special events that may take place in that area. The sales of offsite product, again, seeing what Ogden Zone had dealt, had dealt with when they were at the other site, and not wanting to say now you cannot do those things as they're really not impactful, we felt it be appropriate also to revise the BH zone to allow a business that has, has these stores for, for products to also sell related items to, to deal with the business, and to add that language into the ordinance. And then also with that drinking establishment change, to also look at that onsite allowance to take place as you pass, that now it's not limited to beer, it could be, be liquor, and that it would still be based as a drinking establishment, which we had as a use in the BH zone, and which Ogden Zone could take advantage of. As we looked at this, the planning commission considered the general plan and the West Ogden Community Plan. One of the things that the community plan talked about is, is increasing the, the use of the properties in West Ogden. And by adding more activity into the, the industrial park area that attract more people than just employees, that starts to change the nature of West Ogden, allow other things to take place. And the commission felt that this is supported in the community plan with these type of proposals that we're making tonight. The commission looked at this and recommended 7-0 to amend the BH zone to allow these uses of drinking establishments and cabaret with hour restrictions, allow the outdoor entertainment as a special event, and allow essentially sales of merchandise produced offsite. And those are the three changes that are proposed in the BH zone.
Good, thank you, Greg. Are there any questions or comments from council members?
Chair, this is Glenn from the council office. Just to remind you, I'm not, I apologize if you were just about to do this, but we do have a petitioner on the line. Mr. McFadden is listed as one of the attendees.
Oh, thank you so much for pointing that out. I was not looking at that, so I do appreciate it. We usually allow in these cases the petitioner to speak, so we'll allow that, and then we can ask questions of that person too. Mr. McFadden, would you like to make any comments? I'm not sure if you need to unmute yourself.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, now I can hear you.
Great. I echo what Greg Montgomery has shared in his presentation. I think he's explained it very well.
Any questions for the petitioner from the council? Not seeing any, but thank you so much for being willing to come to the meeting to speak with us. And then we'll open this item for public input, so if you'd like to speak to this item, you can raise your hand. It's getting easier now that there's less people on the line. I'm not seeing any hands raised, so I'd be happy to entertain any motions.
Chair, I'll make that motion that we adopt ordinance 2020-25.
Second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hare and a second by Councilmember Stevens to adopt proposed ordinance 2020-25, and this is a roll call vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Councilmember White?
Aye.
There she is.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Chaburka?
Aye, and that passes. Thank you. And Greg, it looks like you have one more item. This is what you get for being off last week, I guess.
I guess, yeah.
So we have a report from the Landmarks Commission about 301 West Second Street.
Just seeing if that's coming up yet?
There we go. It's coming up right now. They're all set.
Okay. So this is a recommendation, as you mentioned, from the Landmarks Commission, with a petition that's filed by Diana Keo regarding the Stone Farm House located 301 West Second Street. So you can see the relationship of the, the house and the property there versus the Stone Farm, which is on the register, National Register, but also is on the, if I remember, I have the state agricultural protection area also on that farm. But we're talking about the, the home and the outbuildings on the, the home itself and not the entire farm area. So we're looking at the, the home, and there's four accessory buildings on the, on the property, garage of chicken cubes, tractor shed, workshop. Home was built in the 1920s. Part of it used the foundations of the, of part of the fort to help build the home. It's an example of a traditional bungalow, bungalow home that was built in that time period. This gives you an idea of some of the outbuildings. And I think why this is important is it preserves a part of the agricultural heritage that was really west of Wall Avenue. If you think many years ago, all that area was all agricultural. And now with subdivisions that have taken place and really taken out most of the land, this is kind of a remnant of, of, of part of the past of Ogden, where originally in the development, everyone lived inside the city batteries, which were defined by the Ogden Weaver River, and everyone farmed outside of those batteries of the river. And as Ogden expanded and, and increased in size, a lot of these farm areas then, then were taken out. As the nomination is considered, the ordinance talks about looking at this, a couple items, historical significance and architectural significance. In this case, in looking at the historic significance, as the commission looked at this, they really felt it's telling the story of that farming aspect of, of Ogden and its, and its founding. It also is one of the last areas of, of farming that is still in existence in the Ogden city limits, and shows the transitions that's taken place with some of those buildings from the horse era to the, to the engine era, and horses to tractors. And then the other item was on the architecture, the, the single-story bungalow, having a very typical bungalow design, some half, half timber design that gives some elements of arts and crafts into the building. A lot of the, the building still has many original items, and even though some things have had, been added such as storm windows over the wood windows to help give it better weatherproofing, the features of the home still have many of the existing features in it. Even though there may be some slight modifications that have taken place, when we look at a nomination, we consider it at that point of, of looking at the entire property and not piecemeal and taking this piece or this piece. There is still enough historic significance in all these items put together that the commission felt is appropriate to recommend this be placed on the local register by a 5-0 vote, based on both historic and architectural significance. And I think many of the council members might have seen the video that Anna Keo had put together this morning and sent out, talking a little bit about the story of the farm.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions or comments?
Greg, what about the accessory buildings? Is the petitioner going to improve those or take care of those, or will they continue to deteriorate as, as the years go by?
Well, I think that's more of a question to the petitioner, because generally the way you're putting it on the register is to maintain what you have and to maintain that. And so, you know, keeping things up, those are the reasons you put on the register. You really don't want to change and alter the designs. You want to have that be a story of the, of history of the area.
And if they don't do that, who has the responsibility to do that?
It's still the property owner's responsibility to maintain their properties.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, I'd be happy to send a, you know, to consider any motions for setting a public hearing.
Chair, I propose that we set the public hearing for the proposed ordinance 2020-28 for July 7th.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember White and a second by Councilmember Hare to set the public hearing for proposed ordinance 2020-28. Any further discussions about this? Okay.
I just want to make a point that I think Ms. Keo and Mr. Dave Montgomery, they're kind of good stewards of this property and this area. They've always been active in doing things to and this area. They've always been active in doing things to promote the history and to protect the protect that history on this ground. And I salute them and I think it's a great idea. I think it's, I'm happy that they're that invested. So are you looking for a motion?
Um, I've already got the motion. I was just asking for discussion.
That's right. Okay.
Thank you. Sorry. We've got a lot to do tonight. It's getting blurry. Yes.
Yeah, I'm a little tense. There's a, yeah, it's like Groundhog Day. Sorry.
And but this time we get to do a voice vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, that passes.
Chair, I'd like to, on that one that is presented, to maybe have the, these individuals come and maybe tell us exactly what they plan to do with the structures that are on there. That would be interesting to me.
Oh, you mean for the public hearing date?
Right.
Chair, this is Glenn from the council office. They will have the chance to address the council and talk about that.
Thank you, Glenn. Okay, Greg is off the hook now. Thanks so much for all of your efforts tonight, Greg. And so now we will have reports from the administration. Welcome, Mayor Brown of the Public Legal Department, to talk about the Utah Risk Management Agency Interlocal Agreement.
Thank you, Chair Chubberka and members of the council. This is a request from administration to adopt the first amended and restated interlocal agreement for the organization currently known as the Utah Risk Management Mutual Association. And Ogden has been a member of Irma for about 35 years. And we join, there's a total of 15 members of this organization. This is our risk, our risk pool, and we're authorized by state law to form a risk agency with other municipalities. It's, one of the benefits is that we have financial stability here because we pay an annual fee and then we can spread out any liability over a period of five years. This interlocal agreement makes a few changes. They were reviewed by a panel of attorneys, city attorneys, including Gary Williams. One of the changes is that the name of the organization is going from the association, the Risk Management Association, to the Utah Risk Management Agency, which is, the term agency is more in line with an organization of this type. There's also some statutory updates to be current with some of the current Utah law provisions. There are some other changes to allow the board to determine how many members are on the executive committee rather than creating a set amount. The restated interlocal also gives the executive director the authority to hire the secretary and treasury positions, which this is consistent with past and current practice. There's also a change that allows the board members to make non-substantive changes. So if there's any grammatical changes or any structural changes or modifications that need to be made, this doesn't have to be brought back before all the municipalities to approve. Apparently, there was an attempt in 1995 to make some of these changes. And because not all of the municipalities changed, adopted the changes at that time, those changes never went through. So if there's a couple items of background, just to also let you know, one of the benefits of being a member of Irma is they do quite a lot of loss prevention, loss control with the city. They do some internal audits of our areas of safety areas and doing some inspections, like playground inspections and areas annually that can help us with our loss control. And they also provide quite a lot of education and training for the city to, again, to help us control loss, minimize and prevent loss and minimize risk for the city. Are there any specific questions that I might be able to answer for you?
Mayor, do you know if they're going to change their website since their name changed?
You know, I don't know specifically, but I was looking at that site today as well. And I can follow up with them, but I imagine they will since the name changed for the organization.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks so much for your time, Mayor.
Sure, thank you.
I'd be happy to entertain any motions about this item.
Chair, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2020-17.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hare, a second by Councilmember Stevens to adopt Resolution 2020-17. And is there any more discussion on this item before we do the roll call vote? I see none.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Chubberka?
Aye. And that passes. Thank you. Thanks again, Mayor.
Thank you.
And now we will hear from Tom Christopoulos from Community Economic Development to tell us a little bit about the Coronavirus Relief Fund Business Grant Program.
Chair Chubberka, council members, thanks for staying late to hear this particular proposal. We've got notice on this and action to take was, we had very little time in order to prep and move this entire program forward. And so I appreciate very much your willingness to hear and consider this. With the impacts of COVID-19, I think everyone's aware. Earlier in the day, I talked a little bit about some of those impacts to our local businesses. I won't delineate those right now. I think we're aware of some of those that are coming on. The state of Utah is distributing a portion of 1.25 billion CRF funding to counties and municipalities. Our share of that's in the first tranche, 2.6 million, with the potential of acquiring $7.8 million. Not all of that is targeted for this program. We will use a percentage of that based on the demand for what we are proposing. We're proposing to use Ogden's allotted CRF funds to establish Coronavirus Relief Fund. And that relief fund basically is designed to help locally owned businesses, local companies or companies that have distinct profit and loss accountability, which is they need to demonstrate that they've had significant losses that have been, that have been under supported by other federal or state programs at the local level, and they would be eligible for grants up to $200,000. Other Ogden companies that are not domiciled in Ogden but may have corporate presence here, the example that I use is Home Depot out, Home Depot Distribution, not Home Depot, the retail outlet, and they may have a presence here but may have their accounting rolled up to a national accounting base or a national financial statement. And they're available, they're eligible for $100,000 worth of grants in maximum in that particular case. We also have then a focus on sold proprietorships and CBD retail needing physical modifications. The underwriting provisions for those two categories are much less stringent than the larger grant amounts. And the design is to assist those companies, as we have done with some of our other programs, in a quick underwriting and making sure that we can activate money on a relatively short timeframe. The grant application will be accepted on a rolling basis and will be reviewed monthly. Evaluation criteria. Let me make a clarification. Actually, we will review all of the applications weekly, but we will basically then fund them monthly. Evaluation criteria will include the impact and need and the viability of the business. And if you are uncertain about the viability of the business, there are certain businesses that unfortunately may not even with our help be able to be able to move, to go forward. And that decision will have to review through our normal loan committee process, which will now become a grant committee. Businesses may apply for more than one CRF grant, and grants may be combined with other business loans and other funding. So we have developed a grant application. That sample of that application is in your packet. And it may be modified a little bit to fit in with the platform that we use in the end analysis, which we're considering at this point, the Zoom Grant Platform. And so with that, we hope you can support that proposal and I can answer any questions. Hopefully, I haven't kept you up too late.
Any questions or comments for Tom?
Chair, I think I am a proprietor of a small business and I am not certain if I need to recuse myself of this. I actually may try and take advantage of this. Open to input from our staff or administrative staff as to whether I ought to recuse.
Thank you, Councilmember Hare. And are the procedures that you have to leave the meeting if you recuse yourself for the vote?
I don't know how that works with a Zoom meeting.
Do you mind helping?
Well, I guess my first question might be for Gary Williams. If you would even qualify, it's federal dollars normally. As an elected official, you wouldn't qualify for federal money. Gary, have you got any insight on that?
Yeah, it's still up in the air. And so maybe the best way to do it is to have Brandon text, why don't you jump off from the Zoom meeting for just a minute, represent Councilmember Hare, and then have Brennan text you when it's time to get back on. And that will solve your rules. Normally, if you recuse yourself, you normally leave the chambers. And so that's probably the next best thing. What Janine is saying is correct, that there are some, often some federal limitations. But because we haven't researched this particular grant, we just don't know what those are for sure. So if you're going to recuse yourself, why don't you do it that way? Jump off the Zoom meeting for a few minutes, then come back on. Does that sound good?
Sure. Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Hare. Any other questions or comments?
Chair, I have a question. And it's for Tom in particular. Who are and what is the makeup of the committee that you're talking about?
The loan committee is made up of myself.
Sorry.
Can you hear me?
You might have to be a little closer to your mic, Tom.
I'm moving closer. Can you hear me now? Okay. So the loan committee is standing, is made up of members of the economic development staff, Sarah Mees, Kathy from downstairs, myself, Mark of the BIC staff. And I think I've got them all covered.
Book four.
And yeah, and our attorney to the, and our attorney.
Were you able to hear all of that, Marsha?
It was. Sorry, that was weird.
No, I know. I'm having a lot of trouble tonight too, so.
So all internal administrative, no one from like maybe the Diversity Commission or anyone else that could, or that could hold.
The challenge we have has just been consistency from one, from wrong program to the other. And so all of those have, we have our underwriting criteria, which establishes that it's, you know, that we have to make it so that it's equally applied. And so that's why we have the people that we have. And we can make other appointments if that's necessary. We just never have.
I can appreciate that. Thank you for your consistency at least. I would like to see if we could move into more of a more diverse group of people, maybe.
One of the challenges that we have is with the number of applications that we go through, it's a significant time commitment. This is going to be, it's nearly weekly and to review all of the programs, it takes a significant amount of time. So, you know, obviously, the guys that we mentioned are all being paid. If there's somebody that wants to volunteer, it's a really hefty time commitment. And so that's one of the other reasons we just haven't reached outside of, outside.
Any other comments or questions? And I know that you kind of covered this in the work session extensively, Tom, but do you mind just repeating like how the outreach will be made for this?
Oh, I hope I, I hope I do it justice because I'm going to be gone from memory. Let me see if I can. So outreach, basically, we'll go through all the social media outreach points. We'll be doing a one ad in the newspaper. We'll basically be reaching out through all of our roundtables. So I talked earlier about the roundtables that exist. Those are by industry. We'll be having industry meetings through all of the roundtables. We will be working through all of our bankers and our bank connections, not because they basically refer people that they haven't been able to help. So we'll be working through all of those particular situations. We'll be doing email blasts through all of our, through all of our licensees. And then there'll be personal visits. And there's some other things that are in there. And as I suggested, I will send you out the final marketing and communication plan as soon as I can, probably tomorrow.
And we also discussed Spanish outreach as well?
Yes. And everything will be going as, I shouldn't say everything, as extensively as possible. Anything that's written will be going out in Spanish. And we'll try to do some of our roundtables. I'll try to have a translator at the roundtables where we have any Hispanic concentration and try to cover it that way. We'll also be reaching out through the SB DC and the Hispanic Chamber. So all of those will be the normal sources that we work through.
Great. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to entertain options.
Chair, I make a motion that we propose that it be adopt proposed Resolution 2020-18, approving the Coronavirus Relief Fund.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember White and a second by Vice Chair Blair to adopt proposed Resolution 2020-18. Is there any further discussion about this item? Okay, this is also a roll call vote.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
He's abstainer. Recuse him.
Sorry, thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Chubberka?
Aye. And that passes. Thank you. Brennan, do you mind letting Councilmember Hare know?
Done and done.
Let's wait a moment here till he can jump back on. Just wait a moment here till he can jump back on. It's like he's walking back into the room. Welcome back.
Thank you, nice to be back.
So the last item on the agenda before, just general comments, are the written public comments that we received uh, for the past week. It looks like there's one um, person that's writing about the police department policies, and then there are five additional comments about the airport fees, and all of those are opposed. And one of those uh, comments does come from the the Airport Advisory Committee. If anybody would like to speak to those. I know we have the fees coming up on our agenda. I can't remember, Janine, when you said it was gonna be.
July seventh, I think.
That's then, yeah, we'll have a public hearing about that item soon.
Yeah, I I did not see the one in uh, that's uh, listed in the agenda from the Airport Advisory Committee. Is is it really in there?
Um, unless I just misread it. Or maybe it's a, is it a letter to the Advisory Committee? I guess I thought that Michael, yeah, so Mike Nichols is from the Ogden Airport Advisory Committee. He's the chair.
Yeah, it's not in the packet, but uh, I, Chair, I I did listen to that entire meeting, that was kind of a lengthy meeting. Um, quite a bit of back and forth, and so I'm kind of eager to see how the discussion goes on the seventh. Um, but uh, it kind of went, kind of like you might think it would, so.
Well, thanks for attending that.
But I, yeah, if if anybody wants to give me a call and and ask questions or give their input, I'd love to, love to engage.
Thank you. I certainly know, yeah, I'm gonna delve into those a little bit more before the next meeting to understand all of it better. Okay, now we have.
Chair Chaburka, oh, sorry. That will be included in the packet for the seventh, the recommendation from the committee. So it wasn't in today's packet, but it will be included for the seventh.
Okay, well, then I must have a different packet, because it's in there, but anyway, um, so that.
Here, can I, can I make a, uh, give a little input about that? I I received what came from uh, Chair Nichols, and it didn't seem to uh, line up with uh, the recommendation that was actually given as part of the vote. Um, wonder if somebody could dissect that before the seventh, and so we could make more sense of that.
Oh, you mean that from what you heard at the meeting, it's not, it's reflected in the letter? That's problematic.
Well, it it, that's kind of what I thought. I I thought the, you know, it, he kind of summarized the meeting in his recommendation, but that wasn't, you know, when they came time to vote, that wasn't really what was said as as part of the vote.
Okay. Good to know. So is that something our staff would um, dissect, or should we reach out to?
I I don't know, I, that's a really good question.
We can do that.
Okay, sorry, I'm like, I just don't want to assume that's what you guys are gonna do, but thank you very much, I appreciate it. Okay, um, we'd be, we'd be happy to have you do some general comments, Mayor Caldwell.
Uh, I'd just add, would be happy to contribute to that, too, if questions come up. Uh, our whole group is here and ready to help answer those. But, you know, it was a heavy agenda tonight, and I just want to give a huge thank you to you all and your staff for the flexibility and recognition of the time that we're in. As uh, has been said, this has been a budget like no other. And uh, as we said when we presented it before, was frustrating because we had uh, six months of work and planning and everything else totally derailed by what happened, and we're all trying to make sense of this and and use our best resources to figure out where we're going. And so flexibility moving forward, when we have better data and understand exactly where we're at, is gonna be critical. And I want to give an enormous thank you to my administrative team that with little time or info, redid the entire budget that we'd worked, as I mentioned, six months on to give us conservative estimates, but to make sure that all of our local services that we're all collectively responsible for are taken care of. It really is important, and it, that work was enormous. And I I can tell you, everybody here is exhausted by that, or committed to doing what we've, we've done in Ogden for a long time. You know, it's uh, easy to take offense by some people that say, you can do better, you should do this, you should do that. This group that has drilled into that and spent, you know, forty, fifty, sixty, eighty hour work weeks trying to figure that out and make the best case projections for you all, I'm really proud of them. And I'm really grateful that we have the people working here and that are as committed as they are to the city, so thank you all. And a lot of that information got buried in in a heavy agenda, but it was really important work, and I am very grateful for the people that we have around here, for the transparency and commitment they all have to you all and to the people they work with and to the city that we all live in. And I just want to say thank you to all of them, and and they've done an amazing job in the circumstances we're in. This has been an unprecedented time, and we have really appreciated and want to recognize their efforts.
Thank you. Any comments from council members?
Chair, I'd like to follow with the mayor. I I applaud uh, both administration, our council staff, and even our council members uh, on this budget. Uh, this is my fifteenth budget, believe it or not, and uh, uh, before the COVID-19, we were going along very well, and we would have been able to supply to our employees those things that are most important to to enhance their lives and 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 show our appreciation for what they do. And I believe our employees understand that. Uh, I I think they understand it, and and I do appreciate the employees' professionalism, their, uh, how they go about conducting the business of the of this city. It is, uh, sometimes it becomes very difficult, but we do have some great employees. Now, it's our job as council members, it's our job as council staff and administration to uh, down the road to review our revenues coming in. And if there are anything that can be uh, given to our employees, then I am looking very closely at that. I uh, I I do care about our employees. I do care about our public service uh, employees. I do care about uh, our policemen. And I'm sure, and I don't speak for all council members, but I'm sure they're in the same, they they're in the same condition. They do care about those that are serving our city. And so, and and this budget uh, has in it financial sustainability, and we are providing essential services for the city of Ogden. The reason we're doing that is because we planned to the future in our city. We have BDO that has come online, and that has helped out a great deal in this budget. If we didn't have that, then it would have been an extremely difficult budget to administer. But that was a a amount that really gave us uh, some funds to continue with some of the services that we have in the city. So financial sustainability and providing essential services, but also looking to the future, and we do that. We, our city continues through our administration and our leaders are uh, of the city to uh, look to the future. And I do appreciate now those uh, employees that are looking in that direction. And I I'm just thankful that uh, we have them in our, in our service.
Thank you. Any other comments? Not seeing any movements, fast movement toward the mic, so I I do have a couple of comments. I just wanted to um, first of all, yeah, definitely thank the the staff for all of their work um, on the budget. It's certainly not something I'd want to redo many times with cuts in mind. Um, I think that uh, we've had uh, these public meetings um, through this electronic means, and we thought in in the beginning that it would be temporary, maybe a couple of weeks or something. We found out um, that we're able to continue doing them through the end of August if we need to um, uh, through the legislature. So um, you know, obviously, we want the meetings to be as much like the real meeting as possible, it's real, but to make it more like the real experience. And something that we've been missing is the general public comments period. So after this week's meeting, I know next week we don't have a meeting, or we've got on the fifth uh, fifth Tuesday, but following that, we will commence with doing um, general com, public comments during this meeting, it'll be added to the agenda. That will certainly adjust the agendas just a little bit in a couple of ways, and we'll figure that out as we um, go forward. We had of course uh, done presentations two weeks prior, full presentations on the public um, agendas, so that there was plenty of time for people to write to us or call us or to get those comments in. So we'll be doing some adjustments to the agenda, and certainly um, you all will see that when they get published. But we'll commence with that as soon as we reconvene. Um, and I think that, you know, I just want to again um, give my appreciation to our council staff for moving to this electronic format in this way, for navigating this complicated um, situation really graciously, um, and meeting all the demands that we're asking of them in all the other ways, too. So this is kind of on top of what they normally do. And we don't know when when we'll be able to go back to the chambers, but that certainly will probably um, also be an additional workload for them to figure out how we can do that in a safe way, too. So I just appreciate them very much for that. And I appreciate your patience as council members as we work through. Maybe the pledge didn't come off exactly how we wanted to tonight, but we'll figure it out, right? Um, and certainly want to express my appreciation to the constituents that are working through this process, that want to be engaged, uh, that want to be involved um, to help us, you know, start doing that in the next couple of weeks. I just um, wanted to say that. And then additionally, I just wanted to applaud you, Mayor Caldwell, for the comments you made in the work session earlier around, you know, the efforts, the Utah Leagues of Cities and Towns, which you and Councilmember White are a part of, um, in the leadership there, and um, really helping to move us forward in this community conversation around how we can think about changing our our systems so that they're really better for everybody, and that everybody is, including um, people of color in our community, but also for the police officers and public safety employees as well. So I appreciate that, and I look forward to seeing what comes of all of that. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you. It's like we can adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you. Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Hayer, second by Councilmember White, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all, have a good evening.
Thank you, you guys.
And a good week off next week.
Stay safe.